I'd like to call to order the February 9th meeting of Shelby Township Planning Commission. Madam Secretary, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Dallow.
Here.
Mr. DeCicco.
Here.
Ms. Cassali, absent. Mr. Barnary.
Mr. Turner.
Here.
Mr. Appone.
Here.
Mr. Vier.
Here.
Chairman Moffett, we have a quorum.
Next is approval of the agenda, if there are no corrections.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Turner.
Move to approve the agenda as published.
Support.
And support by Appone? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item is approval of minutes from the January 26th meeting.
Bill moved to.
Moved by Dalu, support by DeCicco. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. This evening, we've got four primary items. Two of them, we've been before this body before. The first is a public hearing on a site plan, number one, four dash four one, special land use number four, on a property at four seven two four one Ryan Road. Madam Secretary, would you read the public, the notice of publication?
Charter Township of Shelby, notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the planning commission for the Charter Township of Shelby, Macomb County, Michigan, has received a request for approval of the following special land use. Applicant, Midhot Allen Tobovic, three eight four eight seven Trillium Place, Harrison Township, Michigan, four eight zero four five. Proposed use, industrial building and truck yard. Location, four seven two four one Ryan, west side of Ryan, north of Auburn Road. Sidwell number twenty-three dash zero seven dash thirty dash four seventy-six dash zero nineteen. Legal description is as follows. The planning commission will meet on Monday, February 9th, 2015, at 7:00 PM, in the Shelby Municipal Building, 52700 Van Dyke. Shelby Township, Michigan, five eight six seven two six seven two four three, for the purpose of holding a public hearing on the special land use application. The application for special land use and the site plan may be examined at the Planning and Zoning Department, the Municipal Building, Monday through Friday, from 8:30 AM to 5:00 PM. Written comments may be submitted to the planning commission at the above address prior to the hearing. Oral comments will be heard during the public hearing. This notice is provided pursuant to the requirements of Michigan Public Act 110 of 2006 as amended. Shelby Township Planning Commission, Jerome Moffett Chair, Raquel Moore Secretary. This was published in the Shelby Utica News on January 21st, 2015. There were 35 property owners and two applicants were notified on January 23rd, 2015.
Great, thank you. Mr. Kirk, did the publication meet all legal requirements?
Yes, it did.
Okay, thank you. And could you explain the uses under the present zoning and if the special land use request is appropriate to this district?
The current zoning is light manufacturing, which is our light manufacturing type of district. Outdoor storage as an accessory use is permitted in such a district, however, in this case, it's gone a little beyond accessory, so now it goes into a special land use, which is permitted in this LM district.
Great, thank you. Any questions for the attorney? Okay, hearing none. The format for the public hearing this evening will be as follows. The petitioner representative will give a presentation stating reasons for the request. Commissioners may then ask questions to the petitioner. The floor will be open to the public, and then the petitioner may make concluding remarks. I see the petitioner's representative is here. I want you to go ahead and state your reasons for the request. What's your requesting and the reasons for it?
Sure. Is for a truck repair building and a truck yard. It's located on about 3.7 acres on the west side of Ryan Road. It's a slightly L-shaped parcel, as you can see from the plans, with the building being closer to Ryan and the truck, the truck yard being towards the rear, towards the west. There will be a fence around the entire truck yard. The property, the truck yard area and the building are accessed by an existing driveway. Apparently, the original parcel was almost square, and when the National Signal property, which is the north and to the east of this, when that was sold, there was a reservation of easement in that deed, providing for common easement for driveways. So that existing driveway is sufficient. The applicants talked to National Signal about using that easement. They're aware of problems with that. So, the building's about 8,500 plus or minus square feet. It's got three repair bays for trucks inside. It's got a little bit of a warehouse. It's called warehouse. It's more of just sort of a staging area for materials that might go in and out of the trucks. It's not very large. And of course, there's some offices in there. And while, while under the technicalities, the ordinance, it's a special land use because it is, the truck yard is sort of the predominant use, it really is for the benefit of Priority Express. They're a long haul trucking company, meaning their trucks leave the state, they're gone a long time. It's, it's not really a high traffic, short haul truck at all. And so you're not talking about a big traffic generator either. So with that, I'm certainly available for any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. Out to the board. Any questions to the petitioner?
I do. Mr. Chairman.
Moore.
Hi, Pete. I do have a question. In our remarks from our township engineer, it states, it appears that the vehicle servicing the trash, oh, I'm sorry, there's no trash that'll be kept on-site with the trucking, hauling. Is that correct?
Yeah, I reviewed that comment from the engineer, and of course, we've got comments back from the engineer and the, and the planner as well, and addressed, I think, almost all of them already. But that comment is referencing the trash enclosure, the dumpster, aka dumpster enclosure. And what they're saying is that the trash truck needs to come in the driveway, go through the gates behind the fence, and then access the, the trash receptacle from the rear. It's kind of, they brought it up as sort of a negative point, but it's kind of on purpose. We don't want that up in the front of the site. We want it back in the back, sort of behind the building, where it'll be of better use to the, to the applicant and more out of sight. So, yes, they will, I guess the answer to that comment is yes. The township engineer is accurate. That's how it will have to be accessed, and that's on purpose.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Turner, go ahead.
Mr. Snyder, do you have the board showing the building elevation itself out there?
No, I did not bring the board, sorry.
Yeah, it's just, it'd be easy to reference. Eaton, the proposed building that you want is sandwiched in between two other buildings on Ryan Road, and as you mentioned, the building itself is closer to Ryan Road. The two existing buildings have a brick facade in the front facing Ryan, which the residents can look at and the motorists can see driving by. Would you be willing to change the eastern layout of the building, instead of split-faced block all the way around? I know they have made improvements with split-faced block, but putting the brick on the front of the building and maybe with a wraparound on the north and south side to bring it more in character with what's there, rather than just carrying the whole split-faced block all the way around?
I don't think that would be a straight-up objection. Would you be, would the, do you think the commission would be amenable, say, to, to brick partway up? It's not a tall building, but perhaps brick up, up and above the windows, and then maybe a different treatment above that? I'm not an architect, so you're...
No, I'm not a designer either, but I was just, I looked at the building itself of what's there, and I know that we have had some combination of brick and block, brick and EIFs, whatever, just some combination there to give it something, a better look along Ryan Road than what's there currently. That's, I mean, I can give it up to the commission to see if they would agree, but that would be something I would like to see.
Yeah, maybe, maybe a suggestion would be is, maybe the applicant could work with the planner to sort of come up with something that's...
Yeah, yeah, I think if the commission were to, were to make that a condition of approval tonight, I think we could work something with Glenn Wynn and the architect and the applicant to, to blend it much better.
Mr. Wynn.
I think it's a fair comment. I mean, you know, we've accepted some of that different type of block because it's more decorative, but this, this building has kind of a plain front. And I think mixing the materials would give it just a little more visual appeal. I think Mr. Turner's comments are appropriate, and if we can work through it, I would appreciate if you and your client would be willing to do so.
Certainly. Certainly, we would.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. This is the only public hearing the planning commission will hold on this special land use request. All remarks will be entered into the record for Township Board evaluation. We are a recommending body, and the Township Board will evaluate our recommendation, which is a legislative body. The Township Board will make the final decision on this special land use request. This time, any from, anyone from the public is welcome to come up and ask any questions, offer their opinion in favor or against for our consideration. I would just need you to sign in and get your name and your address. Yep?
Hello, I'm Mike from American Auto Parts. We own the salvage yard that is just, would be just north of you, right? When we were doing, when we were doing our fencing along the property, I think your site sits up higher than ours. Okay, so the trucks that back in...
So, I'm going to ask the boards the question, and then we'll...
I guess my general concern was that with our site being lower, we have a swale that goes, their site was here, and we have a swale that goes down, and then all the water goes through the swale back to a retention pond that we, that we built. I'm a little concerned with us getting their rainwater, stormwater.
Mr. Wynn, do you have any thoughts on that?
Well, that's a fair concern, and I would think it would be, be addressed during the engineering review of this process, because the whole purpose of this process, they have to contain their stormwater on-site and convey it to an outlet off-site in an appropriate way. So I can, I would rest assured that we would make sure that's done correctly.
Okay. And Mr. Wynn can contact you after, if this is approved, what engine, what engineering comes up with as their solution to that.
What I'll do is, after we get your comments, I'll send them to our engineer and ask them to contact you directly.
Okay.
All right.
That's my only concern.
That's easy.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to comment on this? Go on twice, three times? Okay, thank you. Mr. Wynn.
Just a few minor comments. This is a real clean site plan. We have the driveway easement, and if they have a, if Pete can get a copy, it'd be nice to have that in the file just for reference purposes. The storage is limited to trucks only. If somebody wants to store something else there, we would want that recognized. The only other site plan comment is just a, a copy, a cut sheet of the wall fixture, the lighting fixture. We want to make sure the light fixture shines, points down, because there is residents across the street, and those wall pack lights can be kind of annoying even when they're across the street. The comments on the four and five on our review deal with the fire department, water mains, and fire suppression. Those will be dealt with at the building review. So I, I think all the comments have been addressed, subject to some minor changes, which would occur before we stamp and sign the plan. I'm strongly in favor of moving this forward, Mr. Chairman.
Back to the board, any final ques, any questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Dalu.
Mr. Snyder, what kind of trucks are going to be stored in here? Just the commercial regular trucks or company-owned trucks? The applicant's owned trucks?
Yeah. The applicant, Priority Express, again, as I said, they're a long haul, on-the-road trucking company. So you're talking about what you'd know as a tractor-trailer, a commercial-sized truck. Again, long haul. Their current fleet is about 20 vehicles. They're certainly looking to expand. Obviously, they're relocating here, and they would like to expand. There may be, there may be a trailer without a tractor parked there for a while. It may be a full truck for a while, but, but that's the general nature of what you should expect at the site.
So it's not going to be like private trucking rental, spot rental for outside trucks?
There may be, there may be an occasion where there would be a private rental, but it would certainly be under the same stipulations that you'd put on Priority Express, the same nature, the same...
So would be definite no repairs or any work on?
Not, the repairs, there are, there are expecting to be truck repairs here. They're inside the building. There's three, three bays inside.
Inside, inside, outside. So it's not going to be any repair outside?
No. And it's not primarily a repair facility. That's just for small stuff on trucks that they own and, and can fix themselves. Thank you.
Okay. Any concluding remarks?
No, thank you.
Okay. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Sommo.
Support it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, our recommendation must be based on the following standards. Compatibility with adjacent land uses, consistent with and promote the intent and purpose of the special land use, compatibility with the natural environment, consistent with the capacities of public services and facilities affected by the proposed use, protect the public health, safety, and welfare, and the adequacy of public access to the site. This evening, we may recommend approval. Disapprove the request or table it to evaluate, evaluate the information further. At this point, I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Chairman. Mr. Turner.
I move to recommend approval of special land use application number fourteen dash forty-one SLU four, to permit the use of this site for a truck storage business for the following reasons. The use of the site is consistent with the surrounding land use pattern, which is predominantly industrial in nature, including considerable outside storage. The storage, the storage portion of the site is not readily visible from the single-family homes located on the east side of Ryan Road. Adequate access is provided to the site from an existing easement and paved driveway to Ryan Road. A revised site plan must be approved, provided addressing the comments of the planning director, township engineer, and building director, as well as revising the eastern elevation to incorporate some brick design.
Support.
Okay, moved by Turner, support by Moore. Any questions on the motion?
Mr. Chairman, if you may, can we add to the motion, if it's okay, for the outside repair to be prohibited? Because if there is an outside trucking company storing there, how would the applicant control the repair if they work on their truck?
I think if you could add to the motion, no outside repair of vehicles would be allowed on the site.
Okay. Is it...
Yes, I'll add that, sure.
Acceptable by the support?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Any other comments on the motion? Hearing none, I'll call the roll. Commissioner Turner.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Dalu.
Yes.
Commissioner DeCicco.
Yes.
Christian Bernardi.
Yes.
Christian Appone.
Yes.
Commissioner Vier.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Good luck.
You very much.
Okay, next item is site plan number one, four dash four two, Brett Baker, CND Building.
Good evening.
I'll try to get your name and address for the...
Brett Baker, CND Building, 12955, 23 Mile Road, Shelby Township. What I'm proposing is to put a office and some warehouse building on the corner of Danview and 23 Mile Road, the northeast corner on the vacant lot that I have there. It was previously approved as an industrial building only. This one will have a lot more office associated with it, a lot smaller footprint, a lot more parking spaces.
Okay. Mr. Wynn?
What's rare that I don't have any comments from our department, but I don't have any comments. This was that, the plan was that well-done. There's just a few department comments, building notes that the existing ground sign that's there is in an easement. I don't know if it's going to be possible to correct that as part of this, but it is what it is. Engineers' comments are attached. They're just minor in scope. And then there are some other comments from the Department of Roads, which we can share with the applicant's engineer that they'll have to address, but that's, that's really more as a courtesy. They still have to get a permit from the Department of Roads.
Okay.
Recommend approval.
All right, thank you. Any questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman, is there a drive-through access in the east side of the building?
Yeah, on both, in front and behind.
Because I see like 10 feet. Would that be enough for, for trucks or...
Where are you, I guess I'm confused on where you're...
In the east side of the building?
East side of the building is just lawn area.
Oh, that's lawn, so there is no drive around?
Between the two buildings that are there?
Yes.
Between that and the adjacent building? No, there is no access. That's just grass.
All right. And you show like one garbage container, and would that be adequate for 31, almost 30, yeah, 31,000 square feet? Would that be enough for...
It should be plenty. We've done it before where we had multiple empties during the week and so forth.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chair.
Mr. Baker, that is a very nice-looking building. I have to compliment you. In your plan, you have a notation that you don't know where the rooftop equipment's going to go, but if you have it, it'll be screened properly. You have no idea where it will go?
I mean, it's up on the second-story roof, and we try and keep it towards the middle, just to minimize the, the look of it.
That's fine. I just want to make sure. We've had some nice buildings constructed in the past, and then when they put the rooftop equipment on, it creates other issues, and then they screen it as an afterthought. So I just want to make sure that you know where it's going to be, and it's not just going to be screened, just to screen it as an afterthought.
Right.
Thank you.
Chairman, is there a parapet wall on the building?
There is some. I don't think it's overly tall.
Okay.
I would say it ranging from a foot to two foot in height. But the further I keep those rooftop units away from the edge of the building, the less obtrusive they are. And that's what I try and do, because, because of the screening issue. Put them right next to the side, then they, they stick out like a sore thumb.
Okay. Any other questions?
Chairman, ready for a motion whenever you are.
Go ahead, Mr. Dalu.
With support, approve the site plan for Brett Baker, CND Building, site plan number fourteen dash forty-two, subject, subject to the submission of the revised plan addressing all department comments.
Support.
Moved by Dalu, support by Appone. Got that right? Was it? Oh, was it DeCicco? Okay. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, I'll call the roll. Commissioner Dalu.
Yes.
Commissioner DeCicco.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernardi.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Turner.
Yes.
Christian Appone.
Yes.
Commissioner Vier.
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, we have a re-review of site plan number one, four dash three four, Anthony Penna, Shelby Road Enterprises.
Evening.
Tell you what, I'm going to, I'm going to start off by asking Mr. Wynn to comment.
Please.
Because we, just to refresh everyone's memory, we had, we entertained a public hearing on this issue and closed that public hearing. But our motion was that there were several items that needed to be sort of corrected and flushed out a little bit. And so I'm going to ask Mr. Wynn to give us his review of that, and then we can go back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The major issue, and I'm sure that the major concern to the residents that may be here for that is, the previous plan showed a connection between this development and the development to the north along Featherstone Ridge. And maybe, Jim, if you could point out, that connection no longer exists. The, instead of having...
The road connection used to be...
Tell you what, here, if you're going to talk, and you need to...
And you can maybe turn around so they could maybe show them as well.
Can we, yeah, can we get on the screen? I can get this while...
Okay, the, the road connection used to be extended due north and connected up with the existing street at the north end. In lieu of that, now we put an eyebrow in and eliminated the connection to the north.
So the only access now would be from Shelby Road. There's no longer a connection. So the, the lots that are shown along the north property line would back up to the lots in that adjoining subdivision, and I think that largely, that was the only design, major design change that was made, and that I think addressed those concerns. In terms of the site plan, the one significant item is they did a lot averaging, where they, you allow a 10% adjustment in lot size or frontage. So they've, they've taken advantage of that, but they've done it the proper way, and, you know, they're entitled to that as long as they don't get any increase in the number of lots. Even though they made that, they got rid of that connection, there's no increase in the number, same number of lots as was it was originally. There are some, I'm not sure I want to go through this whole list. There are a few, what I would call more technical adjustments that I'd like to sit down and talk to their engineer about before they submit for final engineering, but there's nothing on here, Mr. Chairman, or commission members that would be a design issue that I think that we'd want to hold them up and get revision to, because they still have to come back for, after engineering, for a final review, and all those items are typically taken care of. So this is their punch list. I want to narrow that punch list down a little bit more, but they've really complied with, I think, the spirit of what we asked them to do.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, to the petitioner.
Anthony Penna, appearing on behalf of the petitioner. We, like Ron said, we tried to address as many of the comments and concerns that you all had at, presented at the last site plan meeting. I'd like to think that we, we did achieve that. I could go through each one of them individually. I don't know how you'd like to proceed at this point.
I need you a little closer to the microphone. Actually, the mean guy in the booth needs to hear.
Chills my balls, I definitely. So if, if there's any questions, we're here to answer them. We can go through each comment, however you'd like to proceed.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wynn.
Some of the comments, I think, again, are more technical in nature. For example, there was an easement shown on previous plans that's not shown on here. I want to make sure that's, you know, properly reflected. There's a minor wetland issue. Again, there, there are minor technical deficiency. We could certainly go through them, but I don't think, I don't know that's really what the scope of the concerns was last time. I, I'd want to sit down with Mr. Jones, get that plan corrected one more time, and then he'd be prepared to go to engineering. But again, it doesn't change the layout or the overall, I think, design of the subdivision.
Okay. Tell you what, I'm going to defer back to my colleagues here to see if anyone has any questions, any specific questions as to, okay, hearing none. Tell you what, one thing I will do, because I know there was a great interest in, from the residents on this issue. Now, we have closed the public hearing, but if you think there was something that wasn't answered or something, you know, I have a little bit of latitude if anyone wants to come up. But I think we, we kind of flushed this thing out pretty, pretty well, pretty thoroughly at the, at the previous public hearing. Okay. Just get your name and address, please.
7064 Gunlock Bay. Do we know where we're getting the sewer from yet? Do we have that? And is there going to be a pump house on the, on the actual property yet? That was never addressed.
Put the questions down, and then...
We knew it was 2,000 feet away. Go ahead.
We are in discussions with the city.
Why don't you get closer to the microphone?
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah. We're in discussions with the city of Utica right now. Our first option, the sewer connects to the site at two spots from the city of Utica. So we've met with the city of Utica. We met with the mayor. They're in support of us connecting to the sewer. However, we're working with their engineers to ensure that the capacity is there. Assuming it is, then what we would have to do is enter into agreement with the city of Utica, as well as Shelby Township, and we'd have to go in front of the board, as well as in Shelby, as well as the council in, in, in Utica. But we are in the process of accomplishing that, so.
Mr. Chairman, and just, our engineer addressed that, her review. She said, that's one option. The other option is if they get it from Shelby, they have to bring the sanitary sewer 2,200 feet south from 21 and Shelby Road and build a pump station. So...
I thought they'd have to go to the high school when I talked to the guy in charge. Now, Bill Lang told me from Utica that they don't even know if they're going to have enough capacity with everything they're going to have going on. So that's why I was just curious. I mean, you don't want to get all this done, and all of a sudden, hey, you might have to go to septic. Not my problem.
Well, they won't be able to go to septic.
Yeah, okay.
And...
Especially when they're 70-foot now, maybe 66-foot lots.
The, the approval is based on the presumption that they would get sanitary sewer. If they didn't, they would, if they had to redesign this, they'd have to come back.
Okay. So if it ain't going to be gravity, though, I'm just concerned if we're going to have a pump station, where is it going to be? What's it built out of? Brick and wood? I mean, that's all I'm concerned about.
We don't know that yet.
Okay, that'll be the next meeting.
Yep.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Come on up.
Robert D. Stockle, 7164 Vicksburg Circle. There is currently a fence dividing the two properties. Fence, four-foot-high fence. Could we respectfully request that that fence remain in place?
I think that, that issue had already been addressed, and that's really, that's that issue, and I don't think that's an issue of, of site plan. Thank you.
I'm having a hearing problem.
What's that? That concern was already, was already expressed to the petitioner, and that's really not an issue that, that we're going to address with the site plan. He'll talk to you about it later. He'll talk to you about it later. Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Oppone?
I move to approve the site plan for Anthony Penna. Site Plan Number 14-34, subject to the submission of the revised plan addressing all department comments.
Support.
Moved by Oppone, support by Dalu. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, I'll call the roll. Commissioner Oppone?
Yes.
Commissioner Dalu?
Yes.
Commissioner Vier?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner DeCico?
Yes.
Commissioner Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Good luck. Okay, next item. Also a re-review. Rezoning petition Number 07-14 and Site Plan Number 14-29 San Biondo-Salmar for property located on the west side of Van Dyke. Tell you why, the petitioner's representative is getting his materials ready. Mr. Nguyen, can I, sort of same as we did the last time, if you, because this was another issue that had some things that needed to be corrected and...
So this is a combination of a rezoning and a site plan review. The rezoning deals with, the property is currently zoned, I believe, R8. They're asking for R12. So it's one multiple-family classification to another. The only difference is between the two is they'd be allowed a modest increase in the number of units. The, I believe that rezoning, if you look at the pattern, it's similar to the property to the south, which is on multiple families. They're showing a similar product to that one in terms of the size and scale of the building. We postponed it the last meeting because there are a number of site plan issues, because it's a significantly large site and there are a lot of details. I think most, again, similar to Mr. Penna's site, I think this, most of those issues have been addressed. I'll just highlight a few of them. Buildings five and six are right on the edge of the drain easement and there are some improvements that are actually in the easement. The concern is making sure that, you know, you're dealing with almost no tolerance for error in terms of construction. So they're certainly gonna have to work through this with the drain department to make sure that they're abiding by that, whatever agreement they come to. There are a few instances where there are some modest discrepancies between the site layout and the, some of the multiple-family building requirements. For example, we have a requirement that you have 25 feet of separation of green belt between a building and any parking area. And there are a few areas where the building is right next to that, not where the garage doors are, because obviously you have to have it that way. But overall, Mr. Moser provided a nice calculation that shows that actually, when you average them all out, they exceed that. But nevertheless, they'd still have to go to the Board of Appeals for that. Also, the buildings exceed the maximum allowable length of 180 feet. We've, those, that would have to go to the ZBA as well. And we have allowed deviations from that when you have a building elevation that's broken up with some, you know, so the facade's not a single blank wall, but there's a lot of recesses and projections. And I think that the architecture of this has been outstanding. They've done a nice job of introducing those elements. And so, again, a few minor details, but I'm real comfortable not only with the quality of the site plan, but with the rezoning. And I've offered two separate motions, one for the rezoning and one for the site plan.
Okay, thank you. To the petitioner.
Hello, Bill Moser with Apex Engineering Group and also Kevin Brandon with Preview Architecture. And then Mr. Biondo is also in the audience this evening. Like Mr. Penna had said, we can go through each individual item. I don't know if that is called for. Mr. Nguyen has summarized the majority of the changes. We did add a maintenance building at the northeast corner. It was after the meeting, it was decided that they'd do their own maintenance. So they wanted to make sure they could store salt and, you know, bond maintenance equipments and so forth. So that's at the northwest corner. And as part of the site plan review, we did, we increased some setbacks, we increased screening per the requirements. The original drain easement was 55 feet, and that's where some of the concern, I think, from the engineer is, is that now that's the proposed easement on there, 100 feet. So it went from 55 feet to 100. We've had discussions with the drain office and they said they'd be willing to grant a license to use that small portion on the upper levels of the shelf, as long as we met some requirements through the engineering department. We feel we can do that. There's an existing five-foot walkway along Van Dyke that was just installed by the county as part of the road winding. I know that the engineer would like a seven-foot. That's something we can discuss. I know the township requires a seven-foot. Would rather not tear that out for almost 700 feet and then put a new sidewalk in its place, only two feet wider. So if there's a way, that might be waived. And be happy to try to address any other concerns that you have. Those are the major issues.
Would that be a ZBA?
That'd be a ZBA, I'm sure. Mr. Chairman, can I make one more comment? And I think what's really interesting, I think the question came up, well, are we trying to add more density to a site that can't accommodate it? If you look at the last sheet where they, Mr. Brandon, or Kevin just handed it out, you can see they've colored one up and there's a lot of green space here. And the, that drain easement kind of cuts through the site diagonally. And even with the increased density in the R district classification, they, they're not even at that. They're more like an R11 than the R and R12. And I think that drain easement that uses up so much of that usable space somewhat offers some justification for the change in zoning. And what's nice about this drawing is it does show, they've really retained quite a bit of open space on the site. We've seen sites where they've crammed things in shoulder to shoulder and you don't get that. And I think this has been a little more of a creative design process.
Okay. All right, thank you. To the board, any questions for the petitioner?
Mr. Chairman?
For Mr. Nguyen, actually.
This property is currently zoned R8. You said it's right now more like an R11, even though they're requesting an R12. We have issues on this site with separation, setbacks, and size. And a lot of this has to go to the ZBA for approval on the size, a separation, and setbacks. So I'm wondering if R8 would not be more appropriate and where they wouldn't have to get variances on this to make this project work as an R12.
Actually, they still would. Because the only, all these requirements are generic to all those districts. It used to be the, each R district had separate setbacks. We changed that and made it more uniform. So the only difference between R8 and R12 is actually density. Because it was become, it became a real problem trying to do the site plan reviews because the ordinance was so difficult and cumbersome. So we, so now the separation between units is based on the height of the buildings.
Okay, and if we, let's just hypothetically, if we were to, let's say, remove a building, get us closer to an R8 zoning, I'm just speaking of...
Absolutely.
It would take care of the separation issues and the setback issues possibly.
Yes, yes, it would.
Because we also have, the size exceeds what is allowable. So we want them to build a larger building, put them closer together, and then go to get variances on it.
If I ask you your question, yes, it would. Reducing the number of units and the size of the buildings would deal with some of those issues.
Thank you.
Anyone else with a comment?
I can address that size of the building momentarily. It's, it's a three-story building. There are numerous types of floor plans. They range from 1,300 square feet to almost 1,700 square feet. Two and three bedroom, some are one-story or ranches, some are two stories. So the architecture's been very creative. And what happens in each one of those 18 units within that building has its own garage. So we've had to expand that building to accommodate the garages. So everybody that has a unit has one enclosed garage. And that's one of the, we started out with a 15plex and we, it does, there's not much of difference between a 15 and 18plex. And the economies of scale on building the 18plex just worked out better. So it's not like we're just trying to make great big old buildings on there. It's, there was a method there, so we could fit all the garages for the number of units.
Could you envision a product that would be the exact same footprint, maybe two-story, that would accommodate the R8?
You still have some separation issues.
Which you were gonna have, okay.
The drain is one of the design parameters that bisects it. And so the setbacks get marched together.
If you have fewer units, the numbers, you probably have less of a push against some of those ordinance requirements. Gives you, gives you more space to work, I mean, I guess I'd rather see people go up than go out.
Mr. Chairman, whatever they put there, they shouldn't be ignoring the ordinances. So that's a non-issue. You ready for a motion?
Sure.
I move to recommend approval to the Township Board of rezoning petition Number 07-14 for San Biondo-Salmar for parcel Number 23, 07-04, 426, 015, to be rezoned from R8 multiple-family low-rise to R12 multiple-family row-rise for the following reasons. Number one, the proposed change in zoning is consistent with surrounding development patterns. Number two, the change in zoning from R8 to R12 does not significantly change the overall developments of the site. And number three, adequate screening is provided between the site and the adjoining single-family neighborhood to the west.
Support.
A move by Vier, support by Dalu. One thing I neglected to do was, we did have a public hearing on this and we closed the public hearing. But if someone has something they feel, as Jermaine do, the conversation before we vote, I'll let you come up to address it. Okay, seeing none, all right. Go back to, are there any questions on the motion? Hearing none, I will call the roll. Commissioner Vier?
Yes.
Commissioner Dalu?
Yes.
Commissioner DeCico?
Yes.
Commissioner Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
No.
Commissioner Oppone?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
Thank you very much.
Well, there's another item.
And you want the other motion, Mr. Chairman?
Sure. Mr. Vier?
I move to approve Site Plan Number 14-29 for San Biondo-Salmar, subject to the submission of revised plan addressing all department comments.
Support.
Mr. Chairman, I think that motion should be subject to the rezoning being approved.
From, from the board, you mean?
The site plan will be approved when it gets rezoned. We don't want a site plan approved that's not properly zoned.
Is this motion out of...
Just add to it, just amend to it. It's approved subject to the rezon...
All right, so, because we were just recommend...
Yeah, that's appropriate.
Part of the conditional rezoning.
Well, it's not, we didn't have to do it that way. You can do it just as a separate site plan. It's actually cleaner.
Right, so the Township Board still has to act, whereas the site plan, we just act. So, okay. Are you okay with the amendment to that motion?
Yes, it'd be fine.
Supporter? Okay. Okay, any questions on the motion? Any more questions on the motion? All right, I'll call the roll. Commissioner Vier?
Yes.
Commissioner Dalu?
Yes.
Commissioner DeCico?
Yes.
Commissioner Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
No.
Commissioner Oppone?
Yes.
Chair votes yes.
Thank you for your...
All right, good luck. Okay, next, Planning Director's Report.
Okay, Mr. Jones, two items. First, our monthly administrative report and then our annual report. We had 16 signed applications last month, which is fairly significant number. We also wanted to present their annual report to the Planning Commission. The, we're required by statute, actually, the Planning Commission's required by statute to report to the board every year on your activities. And typically, what we do in our annual report is identify what's changed over the past year. And happy to say that after a few years where we've been down, we actually had the highest number of applications we've had in five or six years, 360 development applications, which is an increase from 308 the last year. The, almost every category of activities increased this past year, most notably site plans. We went from 17 site plans to 44 site plans. And that's pretty substantial, doubled the number of rezoning applications. In terms of what that means, our, the site plans included or reflected 112,000 square feet of new retail, 400,000 square feet of new industrial, 507 single-family units, and nearly 600 multiple-family units. So that's a pretty sizable amount of activity in one year. In addition to those activities, which is really our core work, preparing for these meetings, we were involved with the Township's Economic Development Committee. We helped with the county doing, preparing these prime property sites, which I think I'd like to show you one night at a session to show you what that's about. We had a business development reception that we hosted last week at Cherry Creek, which is, we had about 70, 70 different commercial realtors. They're showing them some of these 14 sites in the township that we think are prime retail development redevelopment sites, principally sites with a lot of vacancies. So we invited a bunch of realtors and had a little reception and kind of explained what we're trying to achieve. We participate every year in the Township's Visioning Exercise with the public. Our department is one of the departments that coordinates the capital improvements, improvement program. And then we're starting again updating our master plan, which obviously will all be involved in. And finally, this year, we're participating again in the Community Development Block Grant Program through the county. So we'll be getting almost $400,000 of money, which we'll help administer through our department. So we've been pretty busy this year.
Would you mind sharing those, those properties that you're with, with the, with the commission?
And there's a, what we did, let me, let me just give a little background how it started. We wanted to get a little more involved in economic development. We don't, we don't have that skill set necessarily here. The county does, Macomb County Planning and Economic Development. So we said, what, how could we team up with them and do something through the internet at least to let people know what's available in Shelby Township? Because people may go out to, let's say, Cherry Creek Corporate Park and go to the Kuka site and say, boy, this looks really interesting. I'd be interested in moving my business here. And there's really no way of finding out unless you call the realtor who's, the broker who's on the sign. So with the county, we, we put together a website. So if you want to look at that Cherry Creek Corporate Park, you, you know, you just go on that website, there's a link from our website called Economic Development, and go right to Prime Properties. It has all this information on these vacant, high-end development sites. So that was, launched that pretty successfully. So what about retail? So we, we came up with 14 different retail sites and did a four-page, or two-page profile of each of these sites. Those are on the webpage now, too. So I'd be happy to share a link with that with everybody and even give you some copies of that. So we had these realtors out and said, let's, let's show them these sites. Let's bring them into Shelby Township.